I call to order the September 16th, 2024 regular meeting of the Whittier City Council at 7:26. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Okay, hang on a second. Before we begin tonight's meeting, please note that the digital copies of tonight's meeting packet are available on our website. QR code is provided just outside the door or in the top left corner of your YouTube video, which I guess may not be available tonight. So that's a reminder for those tonight, especially if you're speaking at the podium, that please introduce yourselves so that everyone knows who is speaking at the recording. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call, Shen.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Macalto.
Here.
Penn Kush.
Here.
Denmark.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
And Mayor Dickerson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Citizens' comments on any agenda item except those scheduled for public hearing are welcome at this time. Those who have signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak. Please note, this is not a time for dialogue. It's a time for you to speak and the council to listen. Madam Clerk, is anyone signed in for citizens' comments? Larry Gilman, could you come to the podium, please? Yeah, Larry, press the silver button at the base. There you go.
Like that? I'm there? Okay, well, I guess to make it short, I just was making a comment on the annual transit increase. I think you guys need to take another look at this whole thing. I mean, I think you're saying, what you're saying is, is that you made a mistake and you guys gave out too many annuals?
Larry, actually, there's a time to speak on this agenda item later on during when we are working on that particular item. So this time is actually for other items that are not on the public hearing section.
Are you sure you're reading one? I said for public comment. It said, okay.
You signed, yeah, you signed for citizen comments, everything on the agenda except for those for scheduled for public hearing.
Oh, it said except?
Yeah, so I'll put your name on that other one, Mr. Gilman.
Okay, well, I guess it was just the comment on that one is what I want to talk about.
Yeah. Thanks, Larry. Mike Bender is next. Yeah, Mike Bender.
Hi, I wanted to make everybody aware that the 29th and 30th of September serves us in town for our annual training for spill response and RCA C that I represent for Whittier. They sponsor a boat that's going to be coming over from Valdez, the Glacier Spirit, on the 30th to go out and watch us, actually, I'm a service vessel, but watch the training take place in Shotgun Cove there. The, here's the sign up sheet. I'll leave it out. It should be around town, but I'll leave it on the table. Just you can scan. Gosh, everything goes QR codes these days, but it's right there to sign up to get on the vessel. It'd be great if a lot of folks showed up from the community, the schools invited, everybody. If you ever wanted to know anything about serves, aliaska, tanker traffic, what would happen in a spill, these people are just wicked smart. So it'd be a good time to do that. There's, there's no open bar. There's nothing like that. So, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks. Right, anybody else?
No one else.
Okay. Approval of the agenda and consent agenda. Is there a motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda and consent agenda? Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
In a second.
Yeah, discussion. Actually, I'll start. I'd like to postpone Resolution 2024-028. This is in regard to the MOU. In particular, you know, this was brought forward here tonight because of item number three on that agenda. The acting city manager is just looking for approval to, to go move forward and get appraisals. She wants to be able to put out an RFP to get appraisals. We don't have to approve this, this agenda item, this resolution tonight to be able to do that. We could add item, like other, under other new business, we could add item number three, approval to issue an RFP for appraisals. Is that correct?
Yes, if that's what the council wishes, you would postpone this. It would come back to your October meeting and then later on in the meeting, under new business, you would then vote to allow, give direction to administration to schedule the RFP.
Okay, so again, this is for discussion, but I just thought that this is being brought forward. Really haven't had a lot of time to take a look at this. And I would imagine that there'd be just a level of uncertainty, you know, or a long, long conversation tonight about this agenda item that really the reason for bringing it was just to get the approval to move forward, to get a RFP for appraisals, which is one of the things that we will need to help us make decisions. So looking for, I guess, do we need a motion to add that item? How should we handle that? First, should we, should we make that motion first before we decide to postpone this?
I think, I don't think it really matters because there's something in the states so you can add one. The only thing I would say is, if you're...
The only thing I would say is, if you're going to discuss the memorandum of understanding and execute that, then you may, you know, that might change what the council wants to do regarding the RFP. So, or if they're going to reject the MOU. So you may want to take that one up first, just as a matter of fact.
Yeah. Peter, if I can ask your opinion on this, do you think it would be appropriate to go ahead and postpone this resolution tonight?
You were talking about moving into a new business item?
No, that, we're talking about postponing it until the next meeting. Sorry, I should have been more clear. Postponing it until the October meeting, rather than discussing it tonight, that would give us more time to take a look at it and think about it a little bit longer, since we haven't had that much time to look at it. And because we could accomplish really what we wanted to accomplish tonight, or what the acting city manager wanted to accomplish, which was, you know, looking for, because item number three on this was talking about both parties agreed to commission independent licensed appraisers to determine fair market value of the areas of interest. That was really the only section of this that was pertinent tonight. And we could do that by just adding an agenda item saying, yes, it's going, go ahead and we approve you getting fair market appraisals, or putting on a RFP to get, to hire an appraisal company, correct?
So if we could put the approval to do the RFP, what it does is, it moves your, it postpones this MOU to your October 15th meeting, but it gives us the ability to post our RFP and get the responses back so that we're not behind, a month behind if the, if the MOU goes forward. It's just allowing administration to move forward with being able to publish that RFP and do the, the advertising for it, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other comments regarding that? So I guess we are under approval of the agenda. I guess then do we need to take a motion to postpone that? It was agreed that we can postpone it?
Yeah, as long as there's no pushback from any of the council under the approval of the agenda and consent agenda, what we will be doing is postponing Resolution 2024-028 and adding an item under new business, item C3, to give direction regarding appraisals. How's that?
I see head nods, so.
Okay. And so we can vote on the approval of the agenda and consent agenda as amended?
Hang on a second. Let's make sure that there aren't, aren't any other amendments. Any other amendments? All right, seeing none. Go ahead.
Approving the agenda and consent agenda as amended. Macalto?
Yes.
Shen?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Penn Kush?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Denmark?
Yes.
Mayor Dickerson?
Yes.
The approval of your agenda and consent agenda is amended and approved as the following. On consent, you had Resolution 2024-026, appointing the elected election officials for the October 1st general election and setting the date for the absentee ballots. Approval of the August 21st regular meeting minutes and approval of the August 21st, 2024 special meeting minutes, postponing Resolution 2024-028 and adding under new business, item three, giving direction for appraisals.
Okay, conflict of interest. This time, does anybody wish to declare a substantial financial interest in a matter appearing on the agenda? We've got the fee schedule. Does that affect anybody?
Not that, that, I don't think so.
Okay, all right. Next item, presentations and reports. I've got a, a nice presentation here. The City of Whittier honoring Scott Corby for 15 years of service at the City of Whittier. Thank you for your contributions and dedication to this community.
I just have to say thank you to the Public Works Director and as everybody knows him knows that he hates being called out in front, so we had to hide that from him.
Okay, I don't have anything to report. Vice Mayor, do you have anything that you'd like to report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Would the city attorney like to say anything tonight?
I have no comment.
Okay.
We have no comment.
And then acting city manager, would you like to give your report?
I just want to give a quick report. I do want the council and the public to know that in light of some multiple incidences that have happened here in Whittier, we have reached out to the ACLU to help people get information on how to vote, make sure that the process is clear for every individual in our community. We're working, I'm working with legal and our, our hope is that we can schedule a time where citizens can come and talk to someone from ACLU so that they get all the pertinent information from the right sources that will help them be able to vote in the future and understand voting in Whittier and in state. I also want to state that, you know, I just want to send out my prayers to Chris Ursinger, our finance director. She did lose a family member recently and I just, everybody that knows Chris, please just keep her in your thoughts and prayers. And then into the meeting, we, I am, we have canceled the September 24th planning and zoning work session due to administrative staff not being present. Head of the Bay Project, the easement was approved and has been recorded, so they are moving forward. Chugatch is moving forward on that. The Public Works Director is working with developing a comprehensive snow plan removal. And our goal is to have a citywide meeting to bring together the local business owners and operators to help collaborate in snow removal processes. Employment, I'm excited to announce that we have promoted Jason Cates to our fire chief, Nick Cooley to our fire EMS captain, completing our team of three full-time personnel. Their leadership and skills will help us build a stronger department. Nick comes with a strong background in paramedics and so does Jason, which I'm sure that everybody in the community has met Jason. And then unfortunately, I regret to share that Diana Pratt has decided to retire after 15 years of service and her last day will be October 11th. So I just want to say thank you to everything that Diana has done over the last 15 years. We're not going to let her get out of here without us doing something for her. So I just want to keep her, and if you see her, give her a big old hug, tell her thank you for what she's done for 15 years here. Counsel, you do have an additional laydown in front of you. It is regarding the museum update. So since the mayor and I have gone back to DC, we have had a pretty big push from Senator Sullivan to help build a museum. Ted Spencer has graciously paid for a rendering of what that possible museum could look like. We are working with multiple agencies, Sullivan's Office, US Forest Service, and multiple, our federal lobbyists. Our goal is to continue moving forward on what that congressional spending opportunity could look like. These are just conceptual designs. You know, our hope is to build a museum and visitor center that also has additional offices for troopers, Coast Guard, and the Forest Service, and then possibly some additional housing, too. So we're working on what that looks like. I just wanted to make sure as the stuff gets given to me that I'm passing it on to all of you. If anybody in the community has any questions or wants to see, there is a rendering of what the museum could look like in the back. And again, I just thank Ted Spencer for what he has done so far. And he is, you know, he is a legacy that I don't think anybody wants to lose in, in this community. He offers some amazing things and he has so much more to give and is willing to give it to here in Whittier.
That, that could also be a place to display the World War II machine gun that we have also.
Yes, yeah. It would be the museum, you know, Ted lists in the back of this concept how many, how many displays he has and how many additional he could. And my goal is to put this online also. So, but if there's anybody in the public, you can stop by. I have extra copies and I feel free to hand them out and, and share them with you. And that's, that's it.
Okay, good. Next item is public hearings. Non-code ordinance 2024-007, approving the Whittier fee schedules for 2025 and 2026 to include film permit application fees and increase annual transient mortgage agreements. First, is there a staff report for this?
Mayor, I'm going to read the background and justification and then if the harbor master wants to add additional, that way I can, I can cover all the bases to help the citizens and the council.
Sounds good.
So background justification, the council conducts an annual review of the Whittier fee schedule and it amends it via non-code ordinance per our code and through state statutes. The Port and Harbor Advisory Commission has approved Fire Resolution 2024-001, an update, updated fee schedule for years 2025 through 2026. The portion of the 2025 fee schedule includes previously approved three-year average CPI formula, and then it says in parentheses, anchorage of 4.8% in the fees indicated in bold. The same CPI formula, 4.8, is incorporated into the 2026 fee schedule as the exact CPI for the 2026 is unknown for the time of approval. The commission has also recommended a 25% increase to annual transient mortgage agreements or further an ATMA fee schedule each year for the next, for over two-year schedule in effort to close the deficit in mortgage fees. It is important to note that the ATMA, which records indicate was started back in 2006, was never codified or approved by city council. During our 12, 20, sorry, during our Title 12 update, legal counsel noted it is an uncodified practice and it has not been available for the, for all users of the harbor. History, the ATMA was a perk given to buyers that purchased vessels with the intent of the seller or the stall holder giving up their stalls. The purchaser would then be given the ATMA, which was equivalent fee to preferential mortgage fee, but the vessel would be transient. In essence, the harbor slash city was incentivizing and subsidizing the sale of vessels in the harbor. Worse still, this ATMA rate has been given to individuals that asked for it and previous harbor masters granted it to select few, then asked which is outside of the spirit of the original practice. This practice has cost the harbor in excess of $130,000 annually. There are currently 38 vessels taking advantage of the ATMA resulting in a deficit of $1,000, $137,387.43 in 2024. This amount is difference, difference between the ATMA rate and the monthly slash winter mortgage rates. The commission considered nullifying the ATMA program between, beginning in 2025 budget and ultimately decided on a compromise to close the deficit while allowing the ATMA recipients to adjust to the cost increase. The commission recommended a 25% increase over the next four years, beginning in 2025. And included in this packet are spreadsheets that indicate the actual vessels by length currently taking advantage of the ATMA. It, it discriminates, sorry, it demonstrates current and calculated costs with 25% increases over 25, 2025 and 2026, and has also indicated the deficit gap for over a two-year period. One new fee for all departments was included to attempt to recover administrative and legal costs of processing applications for the fees and associated for the land use fee permit per day. And if you guys have any questions or want any additional input from the harbor master, he's willing to do that this evening, too.
Okay, I think next is opening public hearing for ordinance 2024-007. Time is now 7:51. Madam Clerk, is anyone signed in to speak at this time?
Yes, Mayor, Dean Rand.
And just leave it on. Hi, my name is Dean Rand. Myself and my wife Megan Sienna own and operate Discovery Voyages. It's a charter boat business. We've been doing week-long natural history photography, sightseeing tours now for over 30 years. I started coming in out of Whittier in 1989, caring scientists, doing damage assessment for the Exxon Valleys oil spill. 1990, 91 and 92, I had a three-year contract to provide logistic support for the Chugatch National Forest in Prince William Sound. And in 1992, 32 years ago, this date, my daughter was born in the train tunnel. So I've got a little bit of history in Whittier. In 1995, I enrolled my, my two young daughters in school here in Whittier and became a full-time resident. I just got ahold of this whole background justification intent that, that was just read. And so I'm not really prepared for it, but I did some underlying on that because this thing is really full of a lot of discrepancies and holes and inaccuracies. Let's start with the statement that this, the, the whole annual transient mortgage agreement was started in 2006. It was started in the 1990s. It was started by then harbor staff that included Maureen Loffler, somebody here might remember Maureen Kirk, Maureen's husband Kirk built the Whittier, uh, sorry, the Whittier. Thanks, Peter. Anyways, so this, this, this whole arrangement goes back over 30 years. Another thing I want to point out here is that this background justification intent is full of kind of, the essence of it really makes it sound like we're taking advantage. As a matter of fact, it says we're taking advantage in two places as, as annual transient mortgage holders. We're not taking advantage of anything. We were offered a contractual agreement with the city. We took it and, and we've been using it. We've been paying our fees. It was just a contractual arrangement. We're not taking advantage of anything by paying the same fees as permanent mortgage holders. I didn't, I didn't do this to, so I could sell my boat or, or because I was buying a boat. My boat was too big to get a permanent stall in Whittier. They, people wanted me in Whittier and, and I'm sure Victor Shen will tell you that we've been, nothing got a positive influence on the community. And, and to now treat us like, like we're taking advantage of the city is wrong. It's not, it's not accurate. We've been doing this for 30 years. You need to maintain some consistency and uniformity in, in applying rules like this. By charging users like myself 25 to 100% more than someone else who's getting the same or even better service than I do, that's, that, that just speaks of discrimination. I mean, this, this thing, I mean, this thing can go into court so easy for discriminatory practices that, I mean, I don't know how you could even vote on this thing tonight. This, this whole thing is just full of all sorts of holes. It says right here, including the spreadsheet that indicate actual vessel lengths, currently taking advantage. It demonstrates current and calculated costs with the 25% increase over 25 and 26. Now, what does that say to you? That says a 25% increase in the next two years. All right? It says, the paragraph before that, it says a 25% increase over the next four years. Then you read to the bottom of it and it says a 25% each year. Well, this is, you can't, you can't, you guys don't have accurate information. You've got all this misleading information. You can't possibly vote on this thing tonight. So, yeah, you know, like I said, I just got this and, and I don't, I don't get this. You know, in essence, the harbor, the harbor city was incentivizing and subsidizing the sale of vessels in the harbor. Can you point at those vessels? No, you can't. I can think of two vessels that, that have this, this type of an arrangement that were sold and have been there for at least 30 years. That's it, two of them. Those are the only ones I can think of. Anyways, that's about all I have to say. Thanks.
Thanks, Dean. Anyone else sign in?
Mike Bender.
Hi, for those of you that don't know me, Mike Bender, LaZiotta charters, are, are 30th year operating here in Whittier. We started off with one boat in 2011. We got the kayak chief from, from Pete Haddel when he decided he wanted to retire. I can't add much to what, what Dean just said. There wasn't anything nefarious about how we obtained that. We went up to the harbor master at the time. I think she said, great, would love to have you. I think the harbor staff thought, be great to have a commercial boat remain in Whittier, bringing passengers, buying a huge amount of fuel, paying the taxes on that fuel, paying PTBT over the years. I'm sure it's, you know, probably $30,000 or $40,000 that we pay in taxes and fees here. So, and, and mortgage. So to continue to increase it, especially in a transient situation, I guess I don't understand why you'd be an annual transient and, or a preferential and you would pay 100% more for a transient spot when you'd come into the harbor and find that a saner or another boat that really isn't going to buy any fuel or isn't going to contribute to the, the community is now suddenly into a spot that you, you, you left just this morning and everybody knew that you were coming back tonight because that's what you've done every, every day for the last, in the case of the, the chief for 13 years now, and in the case of the Voyager, our bigger boat, for, this is the fifth year that, that it's operated. So, yeah, beyond that, I think those are the points that I was interested in. And I hope on a larger scale that sometime in the future that we look to, you know, number one, efficiencies in the harbor and in, around town, and also some enforcement. There's probably eight or 10 vessels in the, in the harbor right now that haven't moved in the last, oh, five years. So if you want to work, I think a better path, in my way of thinking, is to develop a more active harbor. So those har, those, those vessels, they're bigger, they're bigger vessels, so they leave, leave for a few hours or a few days. They come back. They're not going back out through the tunnel, but they're going to buy fuel at shoreside and they're going to eat here and support our local economy. So, and I'd be, I'd be up for anybody who wants to ask a question or two. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Next up, next up.
Chris Pallister.
Chris Pallister.
Chris, Chris, there's a, there's a silver button.
I forget, is that working now?
Yeah.
I'm Chris Pallister. I've had vessels in the harbor since 1985, so I've been around here quite a while. Like Dean, I think this thing is shot full of holes that could be legally challenged and it probably will be if this ordinance is passed. You think that annual transient mortgage agreements are taking advantage of the harbor? Well, they're not, it's no different than the permanent mortgage agreements. They're being subsidized exactly like the annual transient mortgage agreements. So let's get rid of all of them and put this all on a day rate. I mean, if you're out to make money, that's the big one right there. And so I, the whole thing is pretty unfair and I think there's been a startling lack of notice of people that are going to be impacted by it. Everybody, those 38 people should all had personal, or personal notice that this was coming up so they could have a chance to comment on it. And I heard about it word of mouth. So I, I think this thing is out of line, shouldn't be passed, and I think it needs to be studied a lot more. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Next up.
Larry Gilman.
Larry, you actually turned the mic off. Turn it back on. There you go.
Okay. I guess everybody else pretty much said a lot of the things I wanted to talk about, but some of the other things that they need to remember when we sell the larger vessels, you have to give that new owner a place to park his boat. Okay? Keep in mind purchasing and putting another, and these permanent berth holders, they're going to put another big boat in here. That's your tax revenue. If, by abolishing, which is I think where you're going at is to get rid of the transient mortgage agreements, which is 100% increase will probably pretty much do that, but we have to have that. That creates jobs here in the town. I mean, not only for the vendors that are transient that are here operating under that rule. I mean, they're hiring employees to support them and all this stuff, you know, the fuel and purchase that they do. I think all that needs to really be looked at closer because the way it's, the way it's happening now, if you increase it up that high, people are just going to leave. They'll go to Cordova. Revenue will leave and it might make the paperwork a little easier down there at the harbor, but I think if it really looks like too many of them are given out, maybe you can't give out new transits. But if somebody sells their boat, they're still going to have to have a transient agreement of sort to offer to the new buyer. He's got to have a place to park the boat. You can't just kick him out of the harbor and say, okay, now you can't fish out of Whittier. So I think it needs to be looked at a little better. There's got to be a better way to do it besides 100% increase, 25% in one year. Holy, I hope my taxes never do that, but that's just amazing. That's a really big jump. And I can see a difference between preferential and annual, but I still think there's going to be a place for the annuals and you can probably work the new annuals out, but a lot of those annuals were awarded due to boat sales. I mean, the boat was sold. I mean, I hold several, several transient agreements myself, plus I have my own boats that I run in permanent berths to get a new agreement because when I get a new boat and put it in my permanent berth, it doesn't have to have an agreement because I'm, because I'm the berth holder for the slip. So obviously when I sell that new boat that I just got, it's going to have to have a need for a transient also. So I think you need to look at it a little closer. That's something that needs to be really looked at. 100% in four years, that's a lot of duckets. That's down to almost a day rate. So I think it needs a closer look, more dive.
Good. Thanks, Larry. Anybody else?
We have no one else signed in. I don't know if there's anybody in the audience, but when we're almost done, I do have a letter to read into record, Mayor.
I see Kelly's hand raised. Kelly, go ahead. Kelly, you actually turned it off.
I keep doing that, sorry. Just after listening to everybody here, I just wanted to talk about a couple of things that echoing these, these, these thoughts, but why aren't we encouraging these long-term people to stay here? Because we're actually businesses that are contributing to the community and you, we're not just bringing in passengers and working about our own revenue, but we're employing people who live here throughout the winter. We're buying fuel. We're using services like the marine services. So there is a lot of pass-through. We, we are here working and operating throughout the winter. This is very aggressive. It's very aggressive language. It says we have a perk and we're taking advantage of when we were offered it by legitimately from the harbor and we took it as, believe me, there's no real advantages to an annual transient mortgage. It's very difficult. We keep, we, we just passed a really big passenger transportation fee. We were told that this is going to help the harbor. So when we pass these things, we think, oh, okay, maybe there's going to be, be a little bit of relief because we keep asking the same people for money. We keep asking the same people, the people who are actually contributing to the community to keep paying more and it's, it's getting difficult. It ain't to be a broken record, but we're up here asking for some show of the money that we're paying for. We don't get a lot of services in the harbor. We keep talking about the same things, the boardwalk, the trash, the, the bathrooms. We keep talking about the same things because we're not seeing relief there. So I just want you to please take in consideration that this, these are the people who are contributing and keeping the businesses and the community going with our taxes and our fees.
Thanks, Kelly. All right, Madam Clerk, you can move forward with reading that into the record.
City council members. Hi, all. I just want to put some thoughts together as you contemplate yet another harbor increase. I've been operating commercially out of Whittier Harbor for 43 years now and have never seen it in such worse shape. Nothing works, few things are fixed, and there appears to be maintenance plan of no maintenance. The harbor skiff has been replaced with one that is a toy and not a skiff, work skiff. If you need a boat moved, you have to now pay CTO. The grid is in need of repair and is currently in danger to use. Smitty Cove's ramp is still not repaired and holes are filled with rocks by people paying you to maintain it for their use. You put thousands of dollars into repairing a 28-year-old crane on the city dock instead of replacing it. The dock itself had, had no structural repair or maintenance. You get good money for warfage from that dock for the moment. Winter water, the only water available in the winter is a spigot in the harbor building. If you have a larger boat, it's not practical or safe to get into that vicinity. I can tell you, I can't tell you how many times it's taking three-plus hours to water a boat that is on B float when the wind's blowing. You operate in the winter, we operate in the winter and you expect us to pay your PTT except we, we accept basic services. The only times there are, this one timely, this one timely, there are near drownings on B floats last Friday. The harbor has life rings stationed on the floats, which is a good thing, and the one on B float did not have a line on it, which meant there was no way to throw it to someone and pull them in. I text a photo to the harbor master and sure enough, within a week or so, there was a bag with a line on the ring. Only problem is it wasn't attached to the life ring. It was just there. It would be funny if it wasn't so dangerously pathetic. We won't go into the bathrooms and what you're spending, you're renting, on renting the portables, the floats that are literally dangerous to walk on as much as less tie-up to the ramp to the harbor, which still does not have a safe, still does not have a safe fix to it from sliding off in a strong wind or a cart tie-up. I know this all costs money. Sincerely, Brad Von Wickman, Babkin charters.
Yeah, Von Wickman.
Von Wickman?
Wickman, I think is the way it's pronounced. Yeah. Wickman, okay. Okay, is there any others?
No, Mayor, no one else has signed in.
Okay. Right, if there's no further public comment, the public hearing for ordinance 2024-007 is closed at 8:09 PM. Is, we'll get into the discussion here. Is there a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 2024-007? Damn, all right, let's get a motion, let's get a motion in a second first. Get a motion.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Victor, did you want to say anything since you made the motion?
Can you come back to me?
Okay. Madam Clerk, you'd, this was brought to us by the Port and Harbor Commission, sponsored by and recommended by the Port and Harbor Commission. Should we get a comment from the Port and Harbor Commission since we have a couple of members here to kind of get their take on things? Could we relax the rules and get a comment from them?
Yeah, that, that's it, you're privy, but yeah, I would say that since they did have their public hearings also for this to bring, we brought forward, it might be really worth benefit.
Okay, I'd like to relax the rules and I guess I'll give Nick Olzenack a chance to come forward and if, unless you want to defer. Thanks, Nick.
Nick defer? Is that an option? Thanks, yes, Nick Olzenack, Chair of the Port and Harbor Commission. And I guess my comments would be, this is the most comments I've heard out of any of the public hearings that we've held on any of these topics in the last year. So on the one hand, it's frustrating, as anybody that's in city government knows, nobody shows up to the public hearing comment periods and then it gets down to the wire and we get a lot of comments. I'm sitting back in my chair absorbing a lot of stuff I hadn't heard until tonight. And my biggest, I think my biggest takeaway was even the folks that are reading this resolution are, I, I think they know a lot more than I do probably, but I think there's a lot of holes in even what they believe to be truth or law, I guess would be law. You know, this particular annual transient is not in code anywhere, doesn't exist. So you couldn't compare it to, say, preferential mortgage, which was, which it was compared to just now because it's, it is in code and it exists. So there's probably a lot of room for improvement from hearing the comments that I've heard tonight, whatever that looks like to the council, it's up to you to decide. I feel like our role was to kind of dig into this and there was a little bit of public involvement. It wasn't to say that not everybody showed, nobody, and not nobody showed up, but people are busy, there's a lot of business owners that are out on their boats, they can't come to these ports and harbor public hearings and stuff. So hearing all the comments tonight, there's probably some room for improvement, but the bottom line is, is that this particular topic doesn't, it, it's speaking to a program that isn't in code anywhere. So I don't want to speak out of school, but I suppose one choice would be to make it a codified, codified program would be another solution. So it sounds all doom and gloom, I suppose, when you listen to the comments, but the solution is really in the hands of council, what you guys want to do with it. So does that help?
It does. It, it, it does. Thank you, Nick. Dave Goldstein, did you have any comment on this? I think you had shown up specifically to maybe give some insight.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. I, I heard a lot of good points at, at tonight's meeting here on the interchange that Dean and Mike and I think Matt Protsman also had some, some points, Brad Von Wickman, Larry had points. And, and I think what I'd suggest is that we go back and have a work session and straighten a lot of this stuff out and then bring this before the council. I think one of the things that the Port and Harbor Commission looked at was the need to borrow $9 million to fix a third of the harbor. We also looked at, at the state of the rates between the west side of the harbor and the east side of the harbor and the disparity between assessing these things on square footage as opposed to the length of the boat. Obviously, if you have the length of a boat of 30 feet, you usually have a beam of 10. If you have a boat of 60 feet, you, you basically have a much bigger beam on there, so a 20-foot beam. So you're taking up a lot more square footage using, you know, services, of course, water and electric, which you're, which you're billed for. But the overriding concern here was the need to, to basically borrow or get a grant of $4.5 million and then find another $4.5 million to match that and make that grant happen. When we, when we looked at this, I think going back to Leonard Jones and even before Leonard Jones, whether it was Mark Ernest, who was the harbor master, or Ed Barrett, or some of the recent harbor masters, each one has talked about this preferential mortgage agreement where the rates are the same as the, as the annual, or preferential, annual transient, I should say, it's the same as the preferential mortgage rates. So we looked at that, heard and reviewed this past about this desire to basically condense this into a preferential mortgage and a transient rate. And I think we now have a daily transient rate, we have a monthly transient rate, and maybe there's some room to, to look at a better solution for that too. But I think the overriding concern was to basically enable the harbor to be self-sustaining. And obviously, when you have to go out and look for $9 million, it's not self-sustaining. This is not a problem that's unique to Whittier. It's a problem that exists in all of the harbors and much of this occurred in the 2007 timeframe when the state transferred the harbors to the city and gave the city what they thought were, were fair compensation for maintenance and repair, to bring this harbor up to good condition. You can look at past, past mistakes, you can look at the current situation. I have a lot of empathy for businesses who've been here for 30 years and 40 years and have basically gotten this, this preferential transient rate, this annual transient rate. And I, I think we can reexamine this thing and, and maybe come up with a better solution. But that's kind of the history here. I think the Ports and Harbor Commission initially was faced with, do we, do we just raise these rates? This is not in code as far as the annual transient rate. How do we deal with this? What about the people who are impacted on this? And about the best we could do at the time was to come up with a 25% increase for the first year and a 25% increase in the second year, along with the cost of living and some of the other factors. If there's a better solution, I think I'm open to it. Thanks.
Okay, good, thank you, Dave.
Any, any questions?
No, it's okay. Thank you. All right. And then I think finally, if we could get a comment from our harbor master, any input from, from Dave Borg?
First off, I want to apologize. I, I never meant to infer that, you know, there was something that, that any of these operators or people that are receiving the annual transient mortgage agreement were doing anything unlawful or illegal. I understand they were made certain liberties with a, with a, with a fee and obviously I would take advantage of it. I, I'm not faulting them for that. What I'm saying is we have an uncodified fee that has been handed out to some very, I would say, lucky recipients at this point, that has cost the harbor since 2004 and I couldn't go back to 1990, that's cost this harbor $2.4 million. That's real money and that's just the vessels that are currently receiving this fee or this, this transaction with the harbor. $2.4 million over the last, since 2004. That's as far back as I went. Now, I didn't use current numbers. I went back and I pulled the fee schedules from '04 on and I applied them to each one of these vessels. So I made sure that those numbers were as bang on as possible. You know, brought that forth to the Harbor Advisory Commission Board and said, how do we want to move forward with this? It is a situation that's not in code. It is a situation that in some instances, I'm going to say it, has been abused by harbor masters. They've given people this opportunity. And now it's time to do something. So I put it in your seat. So at this, at the end of the day, we still have a harbor to run. I priced out two 50-amp breakers the other day. Guess how much they were? Dave? Care to, care to feed? Care to tell me? Two 50-amp breakers, $1,300 apiece.
Yeah.
$1,300 apiece. It's not getting cheaper.
Groundfall breakers, yeah.
We need groundfall. This business is not getting cheaper and, you know, we have to stay ahead and this was one of the easiest ways that we could find. Now, we've been talking this fee review since May and you guess how many people in the back of the room have we had in that, in that room, in, in any of these discussions? I know Mike Bender showed up to a few of them, but nobody shows up. I know Mike Bender showed up to a few of them, but nobody shows up. This stuff is posted on the internet, it's posted on our website, we put it out there. How many of these folks have called me? Mike Bender, that's it, nobody's calling me. So I am not an unapproachable individual, I'm in my office, give me a call, I'm more than willing to talk. You guys have the history, I don't, I've been here four years. And you know what's really difficult, and I'm just going to throw this out there, it's very hard to dig up information over the last 30. So I have to rely on information from you folks and if I don't have it, I've got to go with what I've got. So I apologize if this hits everybody, you know, blindsided them, but I'm working off the information that I've got, so.
No, this is, oh, go ahead, Ollie.
Just one thing I want to add, so if council decides that you want to step this back and look at an annual transient mortgage fee, I think the one thing that we've heard and is really important, and I know this is important to the administration, that needs to be codified because what you have now for preferential mortgage holders and transient mortgage holders are codes that govern who gets access, wait lists, all of those things are governed by uniform provisions, obligations and rights. And so if you go, if you decide to do that, then it needs to move in that direction.
And I do want to add one more thing, I've got eight or nine vessels that are commercially operated in the harbor right now that are not receiving the annual transient mortgage agreement. They come in, they put their boats where they need to, they do what they have to do, they're paying their head tax, they're paying their fuel, I mean, they're paying those things and they haven't asked for it, they just, they're here, they're doing their job and so there are other businesses. So this is going to have a huge impact if we start culling this out and saying, well, people that have businesses are going to get this because not everybody that's taken advantage of the annual transient mortgage have businesses, they're just private individuals. Something else we need to think of, because the majority of the annual transient mortgage agreement, you guys can look at the size vessels that I'm talking about in here, I didn't add names, I didn't add owners, I just put vessel sizes in here. A lot of these vessels are in stalls that I cannot assign because I have no place to put them. So we're losing twice. I'm not assigning that to somebody that should be paying a preferential mortgage agreement and there are six spots on B float because I have annuals in there. Where am I going to put those annuals? So this is, so if you think about that, we've compounded the problem. So, thank you.
Good, no, thanks, Dave. And you know, that's what this process is all about, right? This is the way government works, is work on something, you bring it forward, you discuss it, you let the public weigh in on it. We learn something, you know, each time that happens and, you know, it maybe, maybe it seems like a waste of time, I don't think it's a waste of time at all, I think that, you know, I appreciate all the hard work that the Port and Harbor Commission put in on this. And unfortunately, you know, they didn't get enough comment or to add to their recommendation. That's just the way that it goes, at least it came forward for the public to have their say and I think we learned a little bit more tonight, so, you know, thank you everyone for taking the time to show up and and comment on this issue. I think that's it for me, we've got a motion and a second.
I don't think any of your other council members were able to do this.
Gotcha, okay, yeah, you're right. Okay, so then Peter Denmark, have you got anything that you want to add to this?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
So a number of this thing here, the insinuative language aside that some people have taken exception to, in the background and justification, this schedule is an effort to close the deficit in mortgage fees. So I'm not clear on the deficit, the definition of that deficit, but what I'm reading from the spreadsheet here is this deficit is based on maximum occupancy year-round of the slips. Right, like a hotel, that these revenues are based on, the business plan is being based on maximum occupancy. And I see Mr. Borg would like to respond to that right away.
That is correct, most of these, all of them, the exception maybe one or two, the 20-footers, all these vessels are in the harbor year-round. So that the six-month monthly transient and then the six-month winter transient would apply to them, would apply to that vessel because they don't pull it out of the water.
So these 40 vessels on the spreadsheet?
Correct.
Okay.
These are the actual vessels that are, I don't want, I'm going to say taking advantage of it right now.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
And so that's your maximum occupancy, pertains to these 40 vessels only?
Right.
Okay. Okay, so one thing that might be helpful here and I've, ever since the agenda came out, I have been, I've had numerous conversations, some with people who have spoken here this evening and a number of others at the same time. One of the comments made to me is we are given the length of every given vessel in question here and that the vessel name or owner might be helpful information to determine what is a private vessel, what is a vessel operating under a Whittier business license, which may, part of this conversation may be going to relief for those with a business license, using the harbor for commercial purposes. And as we've talked about the harbor over the last two years, we got our, we did get our grant for the harbor improvements to begin next year, correct? Okay. And the increase in the passenger fee, which will be quadrupling by the time it's over in the next three years, I believe, will be up to $10, was designed to fill, to be able to fund our matching portion of that grant or the half of it that we're going to pay for. So the harbor reconstruction project is funded per our current budget, is my understanding. When you look at these vessels according to this rate, I know of at least one of these vessels and I can't drop the name because it's not my place to do so, but they're leaving. It's the biggest boat on the chart and that represents 50% of the first year revenue gain and about 20% of the second year revenue gain. And I would expect the same response from other larger vessels, given the dollar amount involved, who can moor up in Cordova and use Whittier as a transient, not to confuse the term, but come into Whittier as needed and moor their vessel elsewhere in the wintertime. So I think a couple of the bigger vessels will be lost to that at the same time. And so to conclude that thought, I think that closing the deficit is not going to be achieved by this process. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Mayor, I do want to make clear, just for purposes of the record, did you mean closing, so when you talk about closing the deficit, I thought the purpose was to close the deficit in the sense of the difference between mortgage fees. So you have two individuals that were here in the same year with the same characteristics or criteria and one received the annual mortgage, while the annual transient mortgage and the other one did not. And so it's that difference that has to be, that has, that difference that has to be closed.
Rather than a budget deficit.
Yes, and so you have two ways to do that under the law. You can, well, you have three ways, you can give everybody the rate, right? You can make the annual transient rate apply to everybody in that similar circumstance. You can remove the annual transient mortgage agreement rate, which is what the code is attempting to do over a four-year period. Or you can create criteria that would qualify. Anybody who meets that criteria would then be eligible for this rate. So those are really the three legal remedies, if that's helpful.
Yeah, that does help. Victor, you got your hand raised, go ahead.
Well, thank you Ports and Harbor again for spending all the time to put this together, Harbor Master, or for putting this time in, I understand, and all the people that spoke today. Again, I want to zoom out and look at this, the bigger picture here, and I've said this in the past, and I'd like to just reiterate it again because, you know, we talk about closing the deficit. I guess if you want to really look at the deficit that our harbor is experiencing, so that passenger transportation fee pays for the bond that we're getting. So, you know, we're making payments here. However, what's still not being funded, and it's, and if you look inside our, I believe it was last month's budget report from the finance director, again, it states our annual depreciation that our harbor experiences a year or experience, or goes through a year. And that number, this number right here, doesn't close that. I mean, what are we hoping to gain with the annual transient? That will get us about, what, 103? So yeah, so this, you know, I look at this and I see it as it's not going, it's not end-all-be-all, this is only just part of the solution here. You know, we're, I took a look at the transient or the fee schedule there and trying to wrap my head around it between winter mortgage and monthly mortgage, annual transient and preferential mortgage. My head spun a little bit trying to wrap my head around it, so someone called, or someone talked to me and said, propose like, just doing away with it completely. Let it sunset. It seems to be causing a lot of heartache and stuff and I guess that's something I would like to see eventually. But anyways, back to the harbor there. Harbor depreciation is approximately nine, over $900,000 a year. That's unfunded. So that means we're going to get a harbor built here. It's going to be brand new and shiny, you know, at least the parts that we rebuilt, there's still a lot of things that still need to be done that we haven't looked at. And then we're going to be on this trajectory and we're going to be paying off this bond. And then in next generation down, I fear that we're going to be in the same exact place again. We're going to be here with a harbor breaking down and no money, no savings in the bank. Again, okay, that, and so, so something needs to change, you know, we need to start thinking about not just being in the black at the end of the year or even two years, but being in the black at the end of 30 years. Right, so that means, you know, in the short term, it looks like the harbor is going to be appearingly making a profit. But if you look at some of the funds that, those have been established in these last past few years, one is the MRF Fund, Major Replacement and Repair Fund. Nothing lasts forever, it wears out and we got to fix it. And we don't save for that, what we're doing is we're essentially taking away from, we're essentially taking away from future generations there. You know, like we are using up, we are using up the, how would you say, the value of our harbor, just like if you had a vehicle, you use it up. Let's say you buy a vehicle, you know, eventually it's going to wear out, you're going to buy another vehicle. So what do you do? Do we take out loans again, do we shackle them to that eventuality where they're going to have to take out loans to build that harbor? Do we start like getting ahead of it and we start saving money where we can actually, you know, get ahead of the interest there and where actually we can earn interest toward harbor eventual replacement of our infrastructure? And so, you know, I'll go back on this, you know, like this is just part of it, you know, closing that that gap between revenue or finding something that's going to be fair for everyone. I mean, it's not your fault, you know, you guys have, this was offered to you and appears, you know, I'm not kind of, but people legitimately, for the most part, got this agreement, however, it wasn't codified. And so how is that fair? How's that fair to people who have been on the waitlist? How's that fair for people who are just starting their business here and are paying full price? Or not full price, sorry, I don't want to use that word, but paying all the fees, the monthly transient fee, paying all the taxes and stuff. How's that fair to them? How do we make it? You know, with Holly said, do we make it fair for everyone, I guess, how do we? And do it in such a way that we are considerate of like how business, you know, businesses have currently adapted to their cash revenue. You know, something I would like to see is mortgage rates, you know, not just, I don't want to raise rates, that's the last thing I want to do. But also, the very last thing I want to do is shackle future generations to how do you, a state, that's a state that we're in, you know, we fought for that grant for the first time and then we had to fight again two times, two times again to get it because we lost that grant over a really small amount. Right, $90,000, Harbor Master, yeah, because we couldn't, you know, like, oh, we couldn't get there. So they cut us out of $4 million over that, which like, that must be incredibly frustrating and I just commend our staff for like fighting and lobbyists for like fighting to get that back twice. And this harbor grant here, like, you know, we talk about getting grants. It's like, take a look at the news, look what is happening to the state of Alaska, this is a state grant system, right? And so like, what is the state of our finances in the state, or the state of the finances of our state? It's not, yeah, I find it hard that we can't, we're not going to be able to grant our way out of this many of these things in the future and I think that we need to set ourselves in a trajectory where we can think about, think long-term financially and stuff. Right now, like, we've done many things to fill this, these financial needs, we have, you know, transferred this passenger transportation fee and so now there is a basically a $300,000 gaping hole in our general fund because we transferred this fee, I believe, right, part of it, from the general fund to the harbor. And that's the general fund, that gaping hole there that pays for services like a fire and EMS, our public works, our police, our administrative offices here and other services to the city. And we haven't quite figured that out, that's another gap there. So again, why it's so, I am like, we really need to get on this trajectory of thinking about our long-term financial health of, you know, our enterprises fund in our city. Maybe we need to look at this some more and like, I would love to see like a long-term study, it can be internally done, just like, okay, what are our finances, what is projected revenue? And then, you know, when the bond eventually, when we're done paying that and stuff, you know, maybe some of that money can come toward, can go toward, I'm sorry, I'm paying for our depreciation, but how do we make, how do we get in the black in 30, 40 years? You know, I imagine that it's not going to be one solution, it's going to be a lot of things, you know, we're going to have to be closing these, streamlining our fees, making sure that people are paying their fair share. You know, we're just, we're going after the annual transient thing and there's going to be future battles here because, you know, mortgage rates, we haven't, we've indexed those to CPI, but you know, according to some a rate study we've done in the past, the mortgage rates are behind as well. We're keeping up now, but we're already behind, we were behind to begin with. So we actually, we need to start catching up, not just keep pace, but we're keeping pace like years behind. So we need to catch up as well and that is probably going to involve raising mortgage rates on top of CPI as well in the coming years. Harbor Master Borg, you said those amp breakers, how many of those do we need for the harbor? Like each stall needs one?
Well, 50 ampers are just on A and B float and 30 amp though, I mean, they're still running 550 bucks. So, and they're like little computers, they last five, six, seven years and then we just constantly have problems, so you have to replace them. And trying to find them, that's another thing. Six months out for a 50-amp breaker.
So I agree, you know, the harbor brings a lot of revenue to the city and brings jobs, I understand that. But also understand that it is, it costs a considerable amount to maintain that there, so what, the true cost is going up. It's not, it's not just going up with CPI, I mean, our Costco bill is going up, what, 40 to 50%? But construction costs have gone up like hundreds of percent in some places.
If I might, if I might add trash, we're going to look at about 150,000 this year with fuel surcharges and everything else. And our credit card fees alone this year are going to top $77,000. Just for when people swipe a credit card. And we're paying that, we're absorbing that right now. So hopefully that changes down the road.
And you know, like, you know, people, people vote to put us here not to have a good time. I'll be honest, I don't have a good time here. I like you guys, but I don't. Didn't appear that much because, you know, like people expect us to make the hard decisions, the hard uncomfortable decisions. And that's how it works, like with a lot of things, especially this level, like these things, like we want to do the, the right thing, the, the thing that's going to benefit the most people for the greatest amount of time. It's probably going to be. It's going to involve effort. And, and being uncomfortable. And all that, I, I appreciate you guys coming up. They've been working on this for some, quite some time. I urge you guys, please, like get involved early in the process. Because it's, we really need that, like when people are yeah, disengage themselves and are apathetic. We come to these situations, we're coming zero hour, people are calling me at zero hour here. About so-and-so bringing up new information that maybe hasn't been brought forth. And that makes it really hard to move forward. It makes it really hard to make a decision and stuff. I've been talking a long time. Sorry.
You're making some good points.
That's, yeah, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dave Pincush.
Yeah, well, the first thing I'd say Victor is I think you signed up for three more years of this, is remember that. Nobody, nobody forced you. Question to the harbor master, the reference in there to the deficit. That's not talking about the harbor deficit, it's talking about the deficit between annual transient mortgage and if they paid monthly plus the winter rate, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So the deficit we're talking about are two different things here. And then the other thing I would say, people keep pointing out, this is not in code. This is not in code, this is not in code. Yet here we are with, with an ordinance suggesting that we raise the rates on something that's not in code. It's kind of an accepted thing. But one thing, the first thing I want to get to is, and this never, never seems to be acknowledged, but every person that testified here that had annual transient, those people got it under a legitimate system. It's, it was, it was in the handbook at one time, but back in the eighties and nineties, everybody could get it. All you had to do is walk in and ask for it. When the harbor started getting full, I believe in the Leonard Jones is the one that changed it. We, we were getting too many. So they said, okay, from now on, you can only, you can get it. The boat, a preferential boat has it. And when you sell that boat, that, that goes to that, then it goes away. That's the system that was put in place. That's where it became unfair, okay? But many of the boats that are in the harbor got it when it was completely legitimate. It was across the board, anybody could get it. So we're going to be penalizing every one of those boaters, which every one of the testified, I believe. I got two of them over, over time, but I sold the boats and the boats left the, well, one sitting on the dock, one, one left. So not, not everybody, not a, a large majority of those boats got it when it was available to anybody. So we're asking, we're wanting to take that away because other boats got it. And I agree with the harbor masters, no question that some of the boats that got it should not have got it. They didn't even fit into the second category where you sold the boat and next boat, they were just given it. And in that, and that, somebody's not going to be happy with it here too. But you know, you said that there are six slots in, in B float that are not being given out. It was never the intent of annual transient to fill a slip or be assigned a slip. Simple, all it was is you pay this annual rate. And if you come in the harbor and there is a slip available, we'll, we'll put you in it or you'll raft. There was never an intent for them to take that. That happened shortly before you where it started happening. That was also incorrect. That was never the intent. And it, and there is somewhere in writing about annual transient. Because I, I have come, I have come in when I had an annual transient was turned away. It was if there's a space, we'll give it to you. There was no space. And I, along with 12 other boats floated around in front of the bird rookery, waiting for them to call us and let us in because that's how it was done. That's what started the process of eliminating it because there was just too many boats had it, too many boats coming in, we couldn't take them all. And then what happened is there were 13 boats rafted on the outside of A float. Wind started blowing and they, they started turning and they started blocking off the fairway. That's when Leonard Jones finally to sit, brought DOT down and says, we need, we need an answer of how many boats we can have. Unfortunately, that was implemented on July 1st when it went, that we limited it. And so that was a lot of people upset. So anyway, a little history there. You said most of these boats are year-round. I, I would think that it's not as many as you might think. And I think if we implemented, implemented this, a lot of those boats that are now year-round will take their boats out in the wintertime and they'll do five, four, five or six months. So your projections, your projections here are a black and white, everybody's going to participate. That's not going to happen. There's, there's no way it's going to happen. We've already got, one of your biggest providers already said he's done. So the, the biggest provider said he's already done. Many of these boats are, will just come out. I mean, rather than paying $2,000 or $3,000 to sit for five months in the wintertime in the harbor, there's going to put them dry dock or take them to another city. And they take them to another city, technically that city's going to tax them. We won't get the taxes. So we're going, you know, out of your 134,000, we might get 50 out of this. I, I do 100% support letting, passing on the credit card fees, which will, which will give you probably more than this will. I really don't think it's going to work. And I think it's unfair to the people that got it a legitimate way. I think we're, and we're trying to, we're trying to fix a problem. And my understanding was when we passed the Title 12, I believe it is for the harbor, we shut the door on this. So we shut it, let it wear out over time. How many of these boats have, are on the, on the waiting list to get a slip? I mean, they're going to either leave or they're going to, or they're going to get a slip eventually. Just let it wear out. That's, that's my feeling. Some things that were said to me, for example, is, you know, that if, everybody thinks this is about that harbor needs more money, which it does, but that isn't exactly what it is. There's, there's more going on here. But one of the people said to me, you know, why don't they start charging for parking again? I said, what? He says, I haven't paid for parking for five years and I have six different vehicles. I never got a ticket for it. Well, you know, when we, when we did get the, the automatic pay, we doubled the parking revenue. And then you had three years of law enforcement enforcement. You'll see they've had tickets, the first year they wrote $3,000 with the tickets. The second year, 2,000, the third year, 1,500, something like that. But in, in, in that exact same time, you saw the revenue go boing, 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 boing. Cause people started getting the word out. And I, I think there's probably, I don't know, 10, 20, 30, $40,000 potential revenue there that we aren't, we aren't getting. So, and that may be true in other, other ways too. And then so Larry Gilman's comment, and it's, it's, you know, the, these, most of these boats are, are not, are, are bigger boats, they want to stay in the water. And if we start running them off, we're losing tax revenue, we're losing storage, we're losing maintenance, we're losing employees that work on these boats. There's a lot going here. And I just think this is, this is the wrong way to go about it. And, and I, and an example of that was back when Mark Ernest was the city manager. Over three years, we raised rates 51%. And we thought, you know, and hard numbers, hard numbers, this is going to be X number of dollars. We, we actually got like a 21 or 20, 20% increase out of that. We got less than 50% of what we projected because people found ways around it. In this case, it was the bow pickers and they just left. And they, and they would raft up out there and six guys would get on one boat. They'd run back to Cardova for the weekend. They'd come back the next day and some, one guy stayed and watched all the boats. That's what they did. They'll find a way around this, they will not pay this, a lot of them won't pay it. So I am, am proposing an amendment to what ordinance is this? Ordinance 24, 2024 07 to eliminate all language, to change the annual transient fee and to leave it at, leave it the same as preferential mortgage fee.
Mr. Pincush, could you say that again for me?
Amendment to remove the language to cha, to, to the changes of the annual transient mortgage fee, the increases to the annual transit mortgage fee and leave it the same as preferential for mortgage fee.
Okay, so this is amendment, we have motion and second, any discussion on the amendment? Peter, anything? Okay, Dan? Renner? Okay, Victor? Tom Wagner? Okay.
We've got a motion, a second, no comments left, ready for a roll call? Hang on a second, Madam Clerk.
Go ahead, Dave.
Real quick, and this is, this is for Victor, the, the, because we're talking about future revenues. If, if the new bonds, 20, 25 years, do we know yet? The old, the old ones are 20 years. So if we were, we're about 10 years into it. So those, the old, the existing bonds will go away in another 10 years. If we get 20 or 25 year bonds and we take that 400,000 or $500,000 of the passenger fee, if we start applying, if we leave that in the MRF fund and let that grow and put, put it in CDs, do something with it. These docks are designed to last more than 40 years. The Bellingham Marine said as much as 50 if they're taken care of. We will have 20 or 25 years of that, of that passenger fee going into the MRF fund. That's 10, 12, 14, 15 million dollars. So we won't be in the same place we are today as long as that MRF fund is, is not morphed into being used for daily or annual expenses. So there is a, there is a plan in place and it would be easy for our finance director at some point to lay it out and see how much we could, after we get the bonds, we'll know that. So we, there is a plan in place to, to do that in a sense. That, 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 those numbers have been done already. I don't know the exact numbers, but there is something in place to replace the harbor in 40, 50 years.
Those bond payments are, would be approximately 300,000 right now?
I don't think we know yet because we're at 400,000. So it's going to eat it up for now. But the, the idea is as soon as those are paid off, that money would continue to go in to build, to pay, to, to, for rebuild. That, that's, that was the discussion a long time ago. And it comes out to millions.
Yeah, I understand that, however, the appreciation currently is 900,000.
It's not going to make that amount.
No, it's not. So that, that still leaves a big gaping hole right there. And so I don't see it.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
So for clarification, Councilman Pincush's amendment. Is this a language change or this actually going to change the fee structure?
So as I understand it, you're going to change the fee structure. There'll still be a rate increase, but it'll be the same CPI increase that applies to the other rates. Correct?
It leaves the rest of the ordinance intact except for the increase to the annual transient.
But that, it does include the increase by CPI, yes?
Absolutely.
The 4.8%? Okay, just want to make sure.
And removes the two, the two 25% increases.
Yes, and so the way that the attachment or Exhibit A will look is if you go to the line, and we actually probably have to do a little math in order to make sure your notification is, and the Exhibit A is, is appropriate. So when you go to page 23, it says annual transient mortgage, no longer offered. That's all still good language because it is no longer offered under the code. Same dates. And then it says the current rate is $80.59. Says that the proposed rate is $174. So we need to see what that rate would be with just the CPI increase that applies throughout the, the schedule.
It's on the right hands, or it's to the left.
Oh, right, it would be.
Yeah, I've already, I've already included it. So it'll, next year's rate will be $80.59. So both those annual transient mortgage and the preferential. They're in that left-hand column.
But there is no proposed rate. Oh, maybe it comes over here. So we can see the current 2025 rate, but we don't see the proposed 2025.
Yeah, the proposed 2025 is the left-hand column. All of those are what we're proposing. Those are all with CPI.
Okay, so I just, sorry, I just need to clarify. And I want to, by looking at the resolution based off of the motion that is made. It would be to remove the whereas's in ordinance 2024 007, starting at page, or at number 28, which would remove the Whittier Advisory recommended, or Whittier Advisory Commission recommended 25% increase. So it would remove that. And then you would and then your fee schedule would stay as is with the 4%, 4.8 CPI.
Okay.
Which would be the $80.59.
It would, yeah, so your annual transient mortgage, or it says no longer offered, would be identical to preferential mortgage. It would remain this, the same rate as it increased. It would increase identically as preferential mortgage.
Can I ask one quick question? Are, are you still approving the $5 kayak fee as well as the 25 cent environmental fee?
Absolutely. Everything is on there except for the change to the annual transient.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Pincush, one thing I would advise counsel to as you think through this, directing staff to go back and codify the annual transient mortgage fee and criteria. So that it's clear, so that you have that distinction between the two would be legally appropriate. Legally recommended.
And I would really like some help with that. Like, let's all get together and talk about that. So I know exactly how we're moving forward.
Yeah, I would say that we simply, well, just, just throw it in your head. We would simply maybe, maybe sunset it at a certain date. Just put it in there and put it with a sunset date sometime in the future. Give these people a lot of time. I mean, I would be, and in, in that, I actually have an idea for a different, rather than the monthly transient and the winter rate, a different way of managing that to give people a little better rate in it. So I would be happy to work with that.
Go ahead, Tom.
So the change in language from annual transient to preferred, does that change the harbor's expectations on what they have to provide?
No.
No.
They're, they're shaking their head no.
Yeah, correct, it does not. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
So voting on the amendment to change to change. Actually, I'm just going to say it this way. Voting on the amendment to remove the whereas, starting at page, on line 28 in the non-code ordinance, removing the recommendation of the increase to annual transient mortgage fee each year over the next two years in scheduled effort to close the deficit, that would be totally removed. And then your fee schedule would stay as it is with the 4.8% CPI increase. Pincush?
Yes.
McCalldo?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Denmark?
Yes.
Wagner?
No.
Shen?
No.
Mayor Dickerson?
Yes.
That amendment is passed and approved and the original motion is on the floor.
Okay, any further discussion on the original?
So I would definitely encourage one, I mean, the the Harbor Commission did a great job of redoing the title regarding the harbor. And for whatever reason, it was, it was decided to not codify it. But I would definitely like to encourage codification and/or you know, identifying the criteria. Or thirdly, doing something similar to what Mr. Pincush suggested, which is coming up with some type of reasonable sunset. which is coming up with some type of reasonable sunset.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Yeah, go ahead, Victor.
I do voice support seeing kind of current conditions of this annual transient mortgage sunset as well, a specific date sooner than later. And then maybe for, if we were to offer, you know, a, how should I say, a different rate, a discounted rate. What you recommended, Holly, is like some very clear circumstances, criteria that people have to meet to meet this mortgage rate. Or the, how should I say, this mortgage fee here as well. I guess something that we could bring up in new business, how we can move forward. Because it does seem like, it would seem something we need to clean up here. And something I would like to see cleaned up. And I guess there's nothing we can do about current, adjusting for our current rates. They're being increased with CPI. There are no, I guess rates. Yeah, that's what I got.
Go ahead, Tully.
No, I would want, I'd say one thing from the comments that I heard today. And I know that the administration has thought of these things too. You know, you hear things about length and vessels that can't fit within slips. You hear things about a much more specific and uniform application of this in a certain time period in the past. All of those things can be turned into criteria that are very clear. So what we don't have is a rate that is given to some people and not others without a difference, right? Without a difference between those two users. And that's what we need to eliminate under the law. So I think that we can work with the harbor, and we'll bring it to the commission. And then you'll have a conversation just around that issue, and you can get the criteria. And then council can again look at it and see if that's, you know, what direction they want to go.
Okay, any further comments? Okay, we're back to the, oh, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so just one more since we're still having discussion here. I just want to say that I think there's two separate issues here that seem to be convoluted. And one is fair and equitable, and the other one is financial. And yes, they do cross over. But I still think, a lot of people have discussed the financial aspect of it, but I don't think the fair and equitable part really got discussed as much as it should. Well, the word discrimination came up a few times. Well, the truth being is, yeah, it is discriminatory. It's discriminatory toward people who are paying full rate. So I think this needs more work. Just going to say that.
Yeah, good. Thanks, Tom. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none.
Voting on Non-Code Ordinance 2024-007, approving the Whittier fee schedule for 2025, including a film permit application fee and increase to annual transient mortgage agreements as amended. Shen?
No.
Macalto?
No.
Denmark?
Yes.
Wagner?
No.
Blair?
Yes.
Pincush?
Yes.
Mayor Dickerson?
Yes.
That motion fails. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I wrote an N and not a Y. So sorry, yes, that resolution passes by a vote of four to three.
Okay, on to the next item. Ordinance 2024-008, amending various sections of the Whittier Municipal Code. Do you think you guys can make it? Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. Right, we're going to excuse our legal team here so they can make this tunnel. Sorry, let me start again. Ordinance 2024-008, amending various sections of the Whittier Municipal Code to facilitate approval of two consecutive single-year budgets to be combined into a biannual budget beginning 2025. And is there a staff report for this? You would, I guess we do not have our Finance Director, but.
I did speak to the Finance Director in length. So I, as she had previously stated in the introduction, this is the ability for us, for you as council and administration, to approve two consecutive single-year budgets. Then it would be combined as a biannual. Your code is very specific that you have to approve your budgets annually. But this gives you the ability to approve 2025 and 2026 budgets. And then it would be every biannual. Instead of every year, you guys would be working on it every other year.
Okay, we've kind of discussed this quite a bit in the past. I guess we get a motion in a second. Oh, open the public hearing, that's right. Okay. Right, opening the public hearing now for Ordinance 2024-008 at 9:06. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed in?
No, Mayor, we have no signed in.
Okay, is there anyone present who would like to speak at this time on Ordinance 2024-008? Anyone in the audience? Seeing no hands, anyone online? Hearing none? There's no specific further comment. The public hearing for Ordinance 2024-008 is closed at 9:06. Is there a motion in a second to adopt Ordinance 2024-008?
I'll make the motion.
I'll take it.
I think Dan Blurr beat Victor by a hair. We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none.
Voting on Ordinance 2024-008, amending various sections of Whittier Municipal Code to facilitate approval of the two consecutive single-year budgets to be combined into a biannual budget beginning in 2025. Denmark?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Macalto?
Yes.
Pincush?
Yes.
Shen?
Yes.
Mayor Dickerson?
Yes.
That resolution, or sorry, that ordinance is passed and approved.
Okay. Onto new business. Our, my script in the, this is not quite right, but.
This is where you are now.
Got you. Yeah, good deal. Okay, Resolution 2024-027, authorizing the acting city manager to enter into a contract with Alaska Weather Consulting, LLC, and re-appropriating funds for 2024 in the amount of $5,400, with future valuation of annual funding in the amount of $22,000 for the 2025 budget session. First, let's hear a staff report on this.
This resolution was requested to be brought forward at the last council meeting. We had Councilmember Denmark request for this to be appropriated for Alaska Weather Consulting. After speaking with the City Finance Director, some of the possible ways for us to be able to do this would to be break down and prorate the rest of 2024, and then give council the ability to maneuver this overall cost into your 2025 budget. The appropriated amount for this year for 2024 would be $5,400. And the City Finance Directors stated that we would reallocate that from the general fund into the city council's budget under community support or contracted services. And then during your budget sessions and your work sessions, you would then decide and determine on whether or not, where you would put this or if you wanted to fund it for the 2025, 2026 years.
Okay, is there a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
Dave, was that you a second?
I'll second.
Yeah. Denmark, and, yep. Okay, and then any discussion here? Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, Dave, I had to think about this one for a while because it, you know, one of the things we always hear is, well, there's only five people that live in the city that own boats. So this is a very limited, it's very limited to the community, for the benefit of the community. It's, this is, would be more for the boat owners. So with that in mind, but on the other hand, you know, where do we give money out? And, you know, we gave a pretty generous tax free, or tax deferral, not just deferral, but tax incentive to Hoonatota Corporation to come into this town. So that's in the thousands and thousands of dollars versus this amount. So this is, since a new business. So I kind of look this as a grant scenario. But I will just tell you, Dave, I can, I would love to help you out, but I think it's going to have to be self-supporting sometimes. So my thought, I'm 100% behind funding the rest of the year and something for next year. And my question would be for you to come back and say, what months, you know, how many people are calling you in what months? Rather than, you know, January, February, granted, you know, you, there's just a few people. But during the summertime, it's a lot more valuable. So I think we need to weigh it out. But anyway, I support it, but not long-term. And I think it's legitimate. At first, I didn't think it was a legitimate expense with the people's money. But I think, but I, but thinking of it as a grant to get, to keep a business going, I think it is.
Thanks, Dave. Peter, have you got anything that you want to add to this?
Sure. At, I believe it was the last meeting that the letters of support were presented to the council from some surprising corners, to me anyway, of the maritime community. So, and perhaps I'm conflicted, but I have come to count on it. Thank you.
Good, thanks, Peter. Anybody else? All right. Oh, go ahead, Victor.
I guess my questions would be like, the process as to like us coming here and, you know, like this is $22,000. That's when we're contracting services. Usually there's an RFP process that we need to go through, to go through, to acquire such services. And then, yeah, I think I see how we can do it as a community support for people using it. But I think long-term, I could see that we need, we would need, I guess in long-term, I would be hopeful that there'd be partners other than the city to help support a service such as this.
Good, thanks, Victor. Renner.
I guess my only question is, how is this different from just going to National Weather Service? I mean, like what Mr. Pincus said, we only have borders here on the winter. And I know this one really works during the summer. I do support this, but I guess I don't think I see this in the long run.
Good, and Peter, yeah, I think you could comment on that because I know you've come.
Yeah, if I may. The forecast in question is specific to Passage Canal. And Dave has, uses different modeling for the microconditions between here and essentially Shotgun Cove that NOAA doesn't take into account. Over the course of the summer, we lost at least 25% of our days to weather this season. And so I am constantly tracking the NOAA forecast as a function of the Alaska Weather Consulting forecast and tracking the accuracy of both. And Dave's got a batting average, it's about double that of NOAA. And the positive economic impact that comes for this is the companies who are beholden to the microconditions of Passage Canal are able to make safer no-go decisions and also decisions to go when NOAA might have us canceling. One of the anomalies in the NOAA forecast is when they're calling for east winds 20 knots, which is a pretty typical forecast. It's either east 10, east 15, east 20, or just flat-out snotty and blowing. The east 15 forecast, over time with NOAA, is scarier than the east 20 forecast. The NOAA east 20, very calm, comes through as flat water half the time, in my experience. So anyway, being able to make, once again, accurate calls whether to operate on any given day has a positive economic impact rather than canceling on days when the NOAA forecast would have you believe that it's going to be what it turned out not to be. So, in a nutshell, thank you.
Good, thanks, Peter. All right, any further questions? Tom Wagner, anything from you?
One thing to add. There are other companies in town, and I speak from experience, that are land-based operations that rely heavily on an accurate weather report for staffing purposes. And it's probably a dead giveaway. But as far as figuring out if we can get a barge in, land a train, these accurate weather reports are crucial. So it is, it's not just marine.
Good deal. Yeah, thanks for that. All right. Any further comment? Hearing none? Go ahead.
Voting on Resolution 2024-027, authorizing the acting city manager to enter into a contract with Alaska Weather Consulting, LLC, and re-appropriating funds for 2024 in the amount of $5,400, with future valuation of annual funding in the amount of $22,000 for the 2025 budget session. Denmark?
Yes.
Pincush?
Yes.
Shen?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Macalto?
Yes.
Mayor Dickerson?
Yes.
That resolution is passed and approved.
Next Resolution, 2024-029, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Whittier, Alaska, Appointing Jackie Wild as City Manager and Authorizing the Executive Management Committee to finalize and execute the employment agreement.
Mayor, if I can have one moment, I need to call your HR attorney. She needs to be able to call in.
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Jennifer. We are just introducing the resolution. And just so the council knows, this is Jennifer Alexander on the telephone.
Okay, good. Welcome, Jennifer. Staff report on this.
Mayor, I will give you a staff report, but I do believe that your legal will.
also be able to help you. There is not a background and justification on this. As was directed in, at the August 21st meeting, council passed a motion to hire Jackie Wild as the permanent city manager contingent on approval of a contract by the city council within 30 days. In your packet, you do have a draft of what that employment agreement could look like. And I will put it through to both the mayor and the HR attorney, Jennifer Alexander, for any further questions.
First, I wanted to mention that the title is, there's a typo in the document. It's 029 rather than 009.
Thank you. I can fix that administratively.
All right. All right. Yeah, Jennifer, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. This is a sort of draft contract, and it is not, you know, a proposal that the council has talked about. If it was something that the council wanted to talk about, it would be appropriate to go into executive session to talk about the legal and financial implication of, of the contract. And that's where I would recommend, to the extent council wants to talk about those kinds of proposals, how we should do that.
Okay. All right. Any, I guess we need a motion in a second to move forward?
Well, and, and just not on that, your resolution is also trying to authorize you to allow your executive management committee to enter into those negotiations, but that is up to you. If you, I believe Mr. Denmark had his hand up, so before you make that motion.
Okay. Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, I would actually make a motion to remove that whereas. I think this is beyond the scope of the executive management committee and should fall under the purview of the entire council.
Or you can hold off, finish your meeting, and go into executive session.
Yeah. So we should probably go into executive session now? Or would you rather go into executive session at the end of the meeting? We continue on with the meeting and then do that at the end?
Did I make a motion to remove a component of the resolution? And did it garner a second?
I'll lose a second.
Absolutely. And so what whereas, are you talking on the whereas on line 25, Mr. Denmark? Okay. So, motion to remove whereas in Resolution 2024-029, the, on line 25, that would strike the entire whereas. Motion made by Denmark, seconded by Blair.
Blair, yep.
It's, it's also in the title of the resolution. Do we need to remove that? Or?
We can admit, if you remove it from here administratively, I can also correct the title. And when I, when I do the vote, I'll just state that it will remove that and correct the title.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. We got any further discussion? Go ahead, use your, your microphone, your microphone, Victor.
On the amendment?
Right, Tom, anything from you? This is just on the amendment? Okay. All right. So on the amendment.
On the amendment to remove the whereas in Resolution 2024-029, line 25, and also removing it from the title. Denmark?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Shen?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Penn Kush?
Yes.
McAlto?
Yes.
Mayor Dickerson?
Yes.
That, that amendment is passed and approved. Your, your original motion is back on the floor.
Okay, so now we have, we've amended it. We don't actually have a...
Mayor, we just, we're reading a little further down. That same line is also in line 33, section 133, line 33.
I will add to that motion, if everybody is okay with it, that it will just remove the executive management committee from anywhere in the document. Does that work for council?
Yes.
All right. So that amendment is to remove whereas in 2025, but also to remove executive management committee from anywhere in the document.
Okay, so then we've got a personnel issue. We should probably go into an executive session to discuss. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, was, should we do this now or finish the meeting? And maybe it would be kinder to the audience to do it at the end of the agenda.
Any opposition to that?
Can we make a motion to table until, and then we bring it back up?
Jennifer, what's the best way to do that? Should we make a motion to table or to postpone this item until the end of the meeting?
Yeah, that would be fine. Reorganize it.
Do I need a motion to do that, Jennifer? Or can I just, by their, by their request, it would just be to go into executive session at the end of the meeting?
I can't see the agenda, but if it's a change to the agenda, if, if it's, if they've eliminated the, if the resolution is on the agenda, and that needs to be addressed, then I would motion, I would make a motion to move it to the end of the agenda.
Okay, I'll hear a motion to move that to the end of the agenda?
I made that motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none?
Motion in second. Moving Resolution 2024-029 to item 14 on the agenda, into a, move into an executive session. Blair?
Yes.
Penn Kush?
Yes.
McAlto?
Yes.
Denmark?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Shen?
Yes.
Mayor Dickerson?
Yes.
That motion is passed and approved, and it will be moved to item 14 on the agenda.
Next item is other new business. We added item number three, approval to move forward to issue an RFP for appraisals for the city of Whittier in our negotiations with the railroad. Does that need to be stated any other way?
No, that's, that's it. Just giving me direction and voting on that.
Okay. All right. Yeah, can I get a motion to authorize the city manager, acting city manager, to move forward to issue an RFP to get appraisals for our work with the Alaska Railroad?
So move.
Get a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none?
Motion to direct administration to move forward with issuing an RFP for the appraisals regarding the Alaska Railroad land trade. Penn Kush?
Yes.
Shen?
Yes.
It was Mr. Shen that seconded, correct? Okay, sorry. Blair?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
McAlto?
Yes.
Denmark?
No.
Mayor Dickerson?
Yes.
That motion is passed and approved.
Next item is council comments. Peter, have you got anything for council comments?
Oh, yeah, one question without trying to make a stink here. What was the purpose of having two attorneys here at the meeting tonight?
They were both part of the MOU that was going to be discussed, as well as your fee schedules. They've both been participating in that. And Jess has the land portion of it, as well as Holly, when it came to your MOU.
So when we, just anticipating budget time here, and so, and some of the issues that we're encountering beyond the harbor with anticipated revenue shortfalls, and it's been discussed numerous times that we have a burgeoning legal expense over time here. I just want to offer my own opinion. I didn't hear anything that required an attorney to be here in the conversations that we had. I thought that could have all been handled internally.
Yep, understood. I think that it was just in case, and maybe, maybe that's something that could have been done over the phone. I don't know if, if that would have made a difference.
Your legal team is, is who stated that they have tried to maneuver where they aren't here as much. But when they choose not to come to your meetings, they do, something ends up happening where they should have been here. So even today, we did discuss, you know, the possibility of, if that was going to be able to be postponed. It was something that I will continue to work on to try to labor those costs down.
Thank you.
Good. Dave, Penn Kush?
Yeah, just a request for basically by all administration, but Jackie, to please keep council informed about the, the voting of some of our residents in that concern. I, I think there may be a point in time where council, or I may suggest that council offers some sort of support for that. So I want to kind of be kept abreast of what's going on with that.
Absolutely. And, you know, our, our goal was to immediately reach out to help the, the citizens that are involved, as well as try to figure out every opportunity to give them all the information that they can. So our next step is with ACLU to try to schedule a meeting in a, in a place where someone feels safe to be able to attend that meeting and/or have their questions written down and answered by the ACLU.
Good. Dan, anything?
Um, I had two items. One is, did we have a write-in candidate come forward?
No, sir.
And then I'd like to propose to council that I be allowed to bring forward a resolution requesting planning and zoning, consider the rezoning of the head of the bay to reflect the use that Huna Totum lease intends to use that lease for, which is commercial. It is not industrial. They are going to have leases under them in which commerce is going to happen. And in fairness to the Harbor District, which is zoned commercial, I do not believe any business should be operating outside of their zoned things. In addition, in, in, moving forward to appraisals, commercial property in a lease that has just been invested in $20 million and has the potential of 60, in excess of 64,000 passengers passing through it. I, they have, I think I calculated approximately $4 million per summer in mortgage. It's, it's hugely valuable piece of property. And I'd like to put that challenge before planning and zoning to consider that, to make sure that everybody's playing by, by the same, same rulebook. And I do believe that the appraisal value will triple, if not, you know, multiply by 10 when you look at that commercial zone versus an industrial zone, which is traditionally industrial is considered less value when it comes to land. And having that appraised next to the tank farm will be advantageous to our community.
So what's the plan for zoning up there? Go ahead.
Um, by all means, Mr. Blair, I, I can help you write that resolution. I don't know that you need a resolution. You can make direction for your administration to bring it forward onto the docket for planning and zoning. They have for the last year and a half been working on rezoning the head of the bay, as well as other areas in the community. It, it is a process. The code also has to be changed. Those are, those are things that, you know, that have happened and, and do happen on a monthly basis in planning and zoning. But if, if you would like, we, I full-heartedly will help you write that resolution, or you can just ask for us to have the direction to...
I'd like to have it in a resolution. That way it gets published, and I have certain points that I think are relevant. And so, yes, I would, I respectfully ask for council to allow me to present a, a resolution in, in cooperation with acting city manager.
And legal, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Any objection to that? I guess I should ask the rest of the council. Any objection to that?
Wasn't necessary with, we're already doing it. Sounds like in the process already.
I have points that I want to make in some wheres. I think it's relevant. And I think it's important for council to communicate directly to our commissions. One of the things that I, I feel that all of us can improve on is communication. And I would encourage planning and zoning to reciprocate in terms of communicating by resolution to council.
Peter, any objection to that, to Dan's motion here or to get approval? Is it okay for him to do that?
Approval for...
To work with the city manager to bring forth a resolution?
Yes.
You're, you're okay with that?
I do not have a problem.
Okay, good. And Dave, anything from you? Yeah.
Anything, right?
Yeah. Tom, any objection to that?
No.
Okay, good. Okay, good.
I only ask that we, because it is, is directing, that I, I don't know if there's going to be a timeline on it. Like I, there, Mr. Blair, there's no way I can do it for the October meeting. So I just want to make sure that, that we are on a timeline. If you, if you want to meet with me or, or how that works, I just want to make sure that it, it fits your schedule. But October is going to be a little rough to try to do that.
He'll need to bring his draft to you first, and then you can...
So I'd be happy to write the draft. I, I was trying to get it before council and prior to the completion of the MOU resolution. So, but, anyway, are you going to be gone, like in school for, anyway, we could, we could talk after, after...
Well, and I, I just want to add that even by bringing a resolution, there's still the process on the planning and zoning side. You would have to have, you know, the, the notice for the, you would have to have a work session. You would have to have notice given to everyone within the, you know, the 500-foot radius. You would have to have a public hearing at the, at the planning and zoning level before it was even brought to you, Mr. Blair, as a council to do, to approve the rezone. And from what I'm, from what I'm, I'm hearing is that process will have to take time, will have to take place in possibly October. Planning and zoning doesn't meet until the end of October. And you would still have to figure out that work session. And, and whether or not you're just, you're, you're doing it for one section, or you're, you're going to try to all-encompass trying to do that rezone at the head of the bay altogether.
The rezone process is a process. I just wanted to get the resolution, because I think that there are some sentient points that drive directly to the MOU. The rezone is going to have to happen before Huna Totum opens in April. And the sooner that, that planning and zoning can somehow accommodate that, will allow them to continue their planning. But the, the, the only hurry is to basically have some of these points made in public in writing before the MOU is considered.
Can I ask one more question? Because we do talk about the MOU, and you did reference the tank farm earlier. You, the appraisal does not include the, the Huna portion of the properties. That, that isn't included. Are you wanting to also rezone the tank farm from industrial to commercial? Because the whole head of the bay is industrial.
I would like, that's, that's going to come forward in the resolution, but I would like it to be considered by planning and zoning, but, anyway, that, it's a complicated, that's why I needed to be a resolution rather than a direction.
Sounds good, yeah, just go ahead and bring a draft forward, and then you can address it at that time.
And, and to answer your question, Mr. Blair, I'm gone for the next ten days, and then I'm back, but I'm available by phone and email.
Okay, Renner, anything for you? Do you have something real quick, Dan?
We, it is, it's just, it's a quick question, in regard to code, there was a, we made the news again in Channel Two with regard to a gentleman clearing his lot, and I had him, I asked him to send me the, the code for permit required, it was seventeen dot three six dot oh three oh, and the code reads as, "It is unlawful to perform significant grading work, tree removal, or other landscape alterations, or to erect, construct, reconstruct, alter, move, or change the use of any building, sign, or other structure or improvement within the city without obtaining a permit." This gentleman maintains that this is raw land, so there's none of these, there are no signs, there are no buildings, there are no improvements, so I didn't understand the relevancy of that.
I think the issue here is that that's in litigation, so that, we can't really talk about that here at this time, until that gets resolved. So, yeah, I guess we'll find out later about that. Renner, you said nothing? And Victor, anything more from you? Okay, and Tom Wagner on the phone, you got anything for council comments?
No, I don't think.
Okay, thanks. All right, citizens discussion, those signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak on any subject. Okay. I guess we don't have a sign-in sheet for that, so, so we'll go ahead and raise your hand for the first person that wants to speak, Kelly, you're in the front row there, you're closest, you get to speak first.
First of all, thank you for passing the, to support the Alaska Weather, and first of all, I mean, Mike and I have said, Dave's a community treasure, not many communities have somebody like this, no, no community does, so it wouldn't go to an RFP, because it would, I mean, the National Weather Service is lacking for Whittier, and when we say that, okay, five community members own boats, this community is not just the people who live here, but the people who work and operate here, we are a marine town, but we are also a town that, of extreme weather, and I just want to remind everybody, it was only not less than two weeks ago that we had a very extreme weather situation with a lot of rain, and Dave made a point of calling the city Public Works, the harbor, and went to all significant businesses to let us know that, so really, we are so fortunate to have this service, and it really serves a lot, a lot of people, so thank you very much for supporting that, and Peter for bringing this up. I wanted to let you know that today we had forty-five kids from East High School go out on the boat today, they went out into Passage Canal and hit four beaches for cleanup, they received a grant from Matson, NOAA, and Fish and Game, and Premier Tours donated a bus to bring forty-five kids here to go out and print sound and clean up trash, so that's really awesome, I just wanted to acknowledge them. Just two other things, just from listening here, we keep talking about the passenger transportation tax and, or fee, one thing that is, I want to make clear, and I, that I, how I understood it, that this eight dollars, six dollars of it was going to cover the match, and that the extra two dollars was not part of that match, because when it first came out, it was just the six dollars that, of the PTBT that they were looking for, so it's actually, that, that's how I understood it. When I did our last PTBT, I figured out what that was going to be next year, and it's, it's almost double, and that's because a significant amount of our biggest customers just pay one-way fee, so there's a number of them, so this, this eight dollars is, is not insignificant, I think that will really be, and, and once we meet the match, this fee is going on for perpetuity, so, I mean, let's keep that in mind. And then the last thing is that this ports and harbors, this fee that has been going on for a long time, a lot of people have been talking about it, and I, I want to take a minute to thank council, people on ports and harbors, planning and zoning, parks and rec, it is no small thing to give your time to go to these meetings, Mike and I both sit on separate boards, Mike is actually heading to Kodiak for three days, you know, we love meetings so much that we're actually here on our anniversary, celebrating with all of you folks, right? So it's hard, it's hard when you're the chief, have you seen my shirt? I worked in the cafe today, we're all chief bottle washers, right? We're all very, very involved, it's hard to keep up with these things, I probably, you're right, I've passed that agenda for the ports and harbors, I pass it every day in the hall, I haven't taken the time to stop and look at it, but we're not Anchorage, we're not Los Angeles, we know who the players are, we know who these are going to affect, and as easy as we can walk to the harbor and talk to Dave, Dave can walk down and talk to the people who this impacts, as well as the, the council member, I mean, the, the ports and har, the, the people on these commissions, thank you. I'm not suggesting that we're not, they're not all working hard, but I don't know how to find out about, you know, we get the, we get the email telling us about the council meetings, and so I'm, we try to really hard to look at these things in advance and, and be prepared, if there's some way to reach the people who we know that this resolution or this ordinance is going to affect, it would be really appreciated, because it was phone conversations in the last two days that we all alerted each other, and ignorance is, is no excuse, right? And so maybe we've been walking around a little ignorant, but if we can work on a way to let the people who it affects the most, and we know who they are, we generally know who they are, reach out, hey, this is coming up, you might be interested in it, so it's a little extra work that we're asking you to do, but I think the rewards would be greater, so thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Anyone else that wants to raise their hand, and yes, I see, Jamie, go ahead.
Even thinking, I just have a couple things, I hope you all read your Parks and Rec portion of the packet, we're really working on a lot of stuff, we got a lot of things accomplished this summer, the connector trail is like, I think, what, fifty feet from being done, which is really cool, because it's all volunteer man-hours or woman-hours. The other thing is, I don't know if this is the right venue for it, but I guess I have a question, because Mr. Penn Kush was bringing up other avenues in the harbor of where we could get more money, and I do agree that, you know, I see, just with helping out at some of the businesses down on the harbor front this summer, and using Smithy's any day I can to kayak, you know, people are just doing what they want, so on the one hand, that is a, a respect issue, right? Like, if you park somewhere and you see a sign that says five-dollar parking, you should pay for the parking, but maybe this could be answered in real time, because I want to make sure, but are the harbor staff allowed to write tickets that are enforced? Okay, maybe that's something, maybe that's something that could be changed, because I try to stay out of commenting specifically, because my husband does work at the harbor, but I know he's frustrated, there's six year-round employees, including admin, and I think there's eight maybe in the summer, and I know just because it's my husband, how much he's running around, even on his days off, and how frustrating it is for that lot to be full of cars that haven't paid, and I think, I think you're right, we could get a lot of revenue from that, and that is just one more thing, so if that's a, maybe that's a low-hanging fruit, thing to fix, is one or two of them able to write tickets? I don't know, just, just a kind of a question to pose, I don't.
Or, or have our police force maybe spend some time doing that as well?
I am speaking for my husband, which I don't really want to do, but I know he said, like, man, I got to call the cops to write a ticket, and in the summer, everybody's running around, so, I don't know, just something to think about, but thank you very much.
Thanks, Jamie. Anyone else? Yeah, Dave, go ahead.
I just wanted to take just a minute to thank the council and the administration, and everybody who's supported Alaska Weather, and, and the ability to keep that Whittier forecast free and available to everybody, I'll do my best to live up to your expectations. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. All right, anything else? Seeing, seeing none, yeah, we now come to the end of the agenda, can we, we'll move into executive session, and we'll allow the audience to leave here, can I get a motion to go, or go ahead?
Can I comment on, on Jamie's comments?
Yeah, go, yeah, you're fine.
Jamie, just a comment on, on the, I could be wrong, but I do know that before, ten, ten years ago, parking tickets were not enforceable because of who enforced them, and I believe the harbor master had the authority, but when, when Chief Schofield rewrote the parking ordinance, I think they had to take that out in order to make that binding, I think only police officers could write the ticket, that's kind of what I remember, it could be wrong, but, but after that happened, I recall reading an article about, the harbor master himself had the authorities that we might have missed in the code, so I will find out about that.
All right, thanks, Dave. Okay, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I made the motion.
Give me a second. I'll second that motion.
Second.
Right? We will have Jennifer Alexander, as well as yourself and the council members.
I'm going to have to end the meeting.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mayor, this is Jennifer, who did you want in the executive session?
Yourself, as well as Jackie Wild, acting city manager, and then the rest of the council members, that's it.
We, so we shouldn't have Jackie in the meeting.
Oh, sorry. No, no, that's, that's okay, I thought she needed to be in there, that's okay. Okay, then it is, we'll let her leave to end the meeting here. Okay, I'll take a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? We're out of executive session at ten forty-two. And we had a good discussion with Jennifer Alexander, she's going to make some modifications to the draft contract, when she gets that, she will present that to me, I will pass it on to the rest of the council for just a final review, that should happen within a day or so, I think it shouldn't have, shouldn't take too long, and with their approval, I will get that revised draft to you, and so that you can work with it.
Okay. I would just like to say that any drafts I will put through to my legal, too, so.
That's what we expected, yes. Okay, with that, I think we are at the end of our meeting, any objections to adjournment? Seeing none, we are adjourned at ten forty-three.